Please join me in giving a lousy Tiger Day welcome to County Commissioner Charlie Justice and his challenger Mike McCarroll.
Good afternoon Tigers. Thank you for coming today. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you. It's a pleasure. Before I begin my remarks, I'd like to do the number one rule of a politician, and that's recognize my wonderful wife Kathy in the audience. Thank her for being here today. I also want to honor my colleagues. We have with us Vice Chair Janet Long, you know, Commissioner Ken Welch, and Commissioner Pat Gerard. If you've heard me talk, you've heard me talk about how I have one of the best ops in the world, and it's due with no small part to the ability of working with these fine people. And I also include with that the ability and the opportunity to work with Commissioner Dave Edgers, Commissioner Karen Seal, and of course Commissioner Don Maroni, who we're looking forward to having back at the office very, very soon, as he is in full remission and at home recuperating. Four years ago, I thought the things at the county courthouse was a mess. Today, I admit to you, I didn't realize how right we were. I ran in large part due to the commission vote to remove foreign from our water. A vote as I saw this backwards. A vote that the Times editors at the time called created the commission as an ideological swamp that tarnished the county's reputation. Well, let's take a step back first. As you've heard, I've been honored by your vote before. I've been in Tiger's den before. In fact, I'm now in my 14th year of elected service, a fact that my opponent criticizes, but ignores the obvious fact that you, the voters, get to decide my fate. So while I've been in office before, I want to take a second to share a little bit about my history in Pinellas County. I was born here in Pinellas County. I grew up in West Saint Pete, the fifth of five children of the Martin Tudy Justice. My dad was a clinical psychologist. My mom ran a daycare center in West Pinellas. I attended local schools, including Bogus, Aga, Saint Pete College, and the University of South Florida. I was raised in a family that leaned on getting back. Being involved in the church or the community was just something that we did. Our family was active in our church and in the September club. We raised funds for all children's hospital and lots of local charities. In college, I entered Lars Hafner's campaign for the Florida House, and I later went to work for him in the legislature. In my last years at USF, I worked at First Union in the building they're tearing down today. I worked at First Union and went to school at USF at night to finish my degree. Later, I went to work at USF St. Petersburg for Dr. Bill Heller. I was privileged to have the opportunity to learn from both Dr. Hafner and Dr. Heller. I continue to work in different capacities at the university, including at the end, creating, developing, and running a leadership program for our students, successes that we're incredibly proud of. I spent over 13 years at USF St. Petersburg. Ten of those years, I worked two jobs. As you heard, I've served six years in the Florida House. I'm trying to think back of my time in California. One of the things I'm most proud of is I sponsored legislation which redirects lottery money, unclaimed lottery money. I don't know if you're aware of this, but there's a million dollars of unclaimed lottery money. It used to go back to the administration. Now it goes into the classrooms. Over $36 million of money to this day. But today, we want to talk about the county commission. That's why we're here. Let's remember where we were four years ago. The commission was openly mocked. The commissioners didn't seem to go along very well with each other or others. There was poor relationship with the cities. Mayors and commissioners would take shots at each other's in the press. Other counties, we didn't have the cooperation with others such as Elbra. Fired districts and fire chiefs. We would have meetings where the administrator would be openly fighting with fire chief in our meeting. Nonprofits and hospitals. The county was headed in a direction to try and bring in multiple services in-house with no real way to pay for it. We had secured a $15 million grant for a health clinic with no way to pay for operations. In-house, former commissioners used to berate employees and seem to take sport in girdled low-level employees of Pinellas. Our unincorporated areas, many residents didn't feel that they were getting their responsibility from their local government, and we weren't partnering as well as we should have with our local businesses. Four years ago, the voters made change, and we've made progress. It started with a critical decision to replace our administrator with the even-tempered hard water. Now we work well across the spectrum of divisions with our cities. In fact, the state government just recognized our coordination with the cities as an example for others to follow. We've shelved old deals, and we treat our 24 mayors not as subjects, but as partners. We work incredibly well with our partners across the region, across the bay. The work of the Tampa Bay Estuary Program, which Pinellas is the leader in, has resulted in the best quality of water in Tampa Bay in over five decades. Seagrass has returned faster than we expected, and when I haven't got a chance to see it, I've told that the snooker is better than ever. Many of them, one of the many reasons that I've been endorsed by the Sierra's Law. And we see the work that Commissioners Seal and Commissioner Long do every day to try and coordinate our transportation issues better on a regional basis. When we arrived four years ago, there was a thorniest issue that was the lack of contract between the county and the 18th Fire Reserve. Again, we put old dealings aside, and we built consensus, and now have a long-term contract to ensure that our 911 system responds when you call. Treating partners like partners and not like service goes a long way to resolve the conflict. This is just one of the many reasons that I've been endorsed by the Florida Professional Firefighters and the Pinellas Police Benevolence Association. We went back to our roots as a county government. We know it's smarter to be a facilitator of services and sometimes a funder of services. We clearly understand, though, that we cannot be a provider of all services. Our fiscal conservative approach is important as we balance the budgets and we maintain the lowest debt ratio of any urban county in Florida while maintaining staff levels similar to 1988. One of the many reasons our fiscal conservative and our policies with our budget, one of the many reasons that I've been endorsed by the Pinellas Guildship Organization. We've professionalized how we treat our employees. We have a clearly defined strategic plan that cuts across every department and involves every employee. We now have a better funded veteran services office. What that means is more services reach our 90,000 veterans that call Pinellas County home. We improve the animal services department. Partnerships with nonprofits such as the SPCA, Pet Pal, and the Humane Society means a better functioning services and a higher rate of adoptions. We've paid better attention to our planning and our historic preservation departments. Under my chairmanship, we secure a designation as a certified local government. What that means in real terms is that we have better local control, and we're now eligible for thousands and thousands of federal and state grants. Our unincorporated community is now engaged better than ever, and this time in a positive way. Under my chairmanship, we're holding regional commission workshops in Charford Springs, Pinellas Park, Gulfport, Eastlake, and Terre Verdi. We've worked to secure a million-dollar grant to improve the roads and means through Terre Verdi and North Portisoto. We're funding library improvements in Palm Harbor and Eastlake. And we're making drastic improvements in recreation opportunities in both those areas and unincorporated Seminole and in Lelwyn. We have moved the needle like never before in the community, in the impoverished community of Lelwyn. We added Parkland to the Joe's Creek Parkway. We're funding recreation opportunities and improvements, sidewalk drainage intersection improvements. We've created the first-ever community redevelopment area in unincorporated Pinellas County. We jumped at the chance to secure 55 parcels and make the promised investment from previous commissions of $5 million to land there to secure affordable workforce housing and to make sure those properties didn't end up in the hands of slum lords. We've beefed up our economic development forces. We have a great partnership with the Small Business Development Administration, and we're providing needed resources to our thousands of small businesses. Our leadership with Tampa Bay Export Alliance is paying real dividends as we set the table for some of our small manufacturers to enter the international market and earn millions of dollars in contracts through our Gold Key programs. We've also, in a smaller way, we've instituted what I call a "thank you for doing the business" in Pinellas, where every commission meeting, we bring some of our lesser-known businesses, and we recognize their successes, and we share those success stories with our community. I know that's a lot of different things to throw at you, but those are the kind of issues that we deal with on an hour-to-hour, day-to-day basis. So it's important to think about who you vote for and why you vote. Why is someone running for office? Do you trust them to make decisions that are right for all of us and not just the lot of voices in the room? You know why I'm here. You know my reasons. I don't look at the commission as a partisan playground. My past is here. My present is here with my wife and my beautiful daughters. I hope their future is here. That only happens if we leave a better Pinellas than what was left for us. My reasons haven't changed, folks. We recognized four years ago that there was important work to do, to make things right, to end the dysfunction, to put aside partisan differences, and to put people first. I'm asking today, let's not turn back the clock. There's still important work to do. I'm Charlie Justice, and I'm asking for your votes. Thank you very much. Good morning, or this afternoon, I should say. And thank you very much for inviting me today and giving me an opportunity to speak. It's very interesting to hear how Charlie plays out a very nice message about where we are. I'd first like to say thank you to my wife as well for coming here today. We moved here a little over 16 years ago with our youngest son, then followed by our two older children, and then followed by my mother-in-law, our father-in-law, and a stepfather as well. So we understand the beauty of Pinellas County and what it is and where it should be. As soon as we got here, I was planning my retirement. Over 30 years of business experience, and I'll talk a little about that in a few minutes. But after planning my retirement, so the first thing that both Elaine and I both did, because we felt it was extremely important to us, is we started to look at how can we give back. So Elaine decided to participate in the Women's Services League, the Queen of Hearts, St. Anthony's Foundation, the Auxiliary. I decided to move on and support ambipathic in a hospital, then Bay Care, or actually St. Anthony's Hospital, St. Anthony's Foundation, where I became the board of St. Anthony's Hospital. Heart Bay Care Health System, on the Finance Committee, I'm obviously the Chair of the Audit Committee. I joined the Science Center of Pinellas County when it was dying, to say the least, and asking and looking for help. But we brought that organization back to life and brought it together with Career Source Pinellas, which I am now an executive board member of. And we've created a new opportunity, new value for this community in STEM as well as in jobs, and I'll talk a few minutes about that shortly. And then also have spent time with USF. It was called USF Connect, where I helped new startup companies create opportunities and grow in their own community. I think again, what's important to really look at and understand is I have over 30 years of business experience, global business experience, working with companies all over the world, and governments, by the way, focusing on how to provide opportunities and values and clear focus on what's extremely important, and that's our customers. How did you do that? You did that through thought leadership, innovation, and doing right for others. And that's what I plan about coming back to do here in Pinellas County. I'm focused on creating opportunities. As we look at the platform which I'm running with, it starts with sustainable job growth and economic development. I don't talk about it. I've been doing it. We've created over, actually filled over 200 jobs since the last 10 months in the manufacturing industry that we've been talking about. When I spoke with the manufacturers in this area, they'd love to expand and build and grow, but they couldn't find employees to do that with. What we created was a set five-to-seven week program that allowed them to identify people, put people into a training that was very focused on what their real needs were, and ensured that they would go to work, because the program was a 40-hour-a-week, five-day-a-week program for set five-to-seven weeks, and then you have certifications on various specific areas that the manufacturers really needed. The first seven they hired went through that program, and 50 of them had jobs making $10 to $12 an hour. We expanded that program and continue to grow, and I'm proud to say that in this year's session, the state gave us additional $2 million to expand that program because this is a success. That creates opportunities for economic development, because if you really want to look at how economic development grows, you have to have a workforce that is ready and moving. And it has to be an entry-level workforce that's ready to move. And what we're focusing in on is creating the value of technology, using technology to drive change, which can then help create new business to this community. The second thing you really have to look at is what I call communications and collaboration with the communities. I've gone from Terre Verdi to Charford Springs, speaking to people, not only from the government's side, but to people on the street, and the message I heard was, nobody's listening to me. Nobody hears what I have to say. An amount of government bureaucracy and red tape that I still have to go through is sometimes too huge to do. We have to fix that. I've got nine patents in business collaboration and one in e-learning, and I applied those throughout my business career to allow me to retire relatively early. And I'm applying those now here in this space as well, because what we can do is we can hit our governments, both municipalities as well as our county government, come together and spine common ground, work on the real issues that we really need to address today, and to focus on the real needs of the people. Remember one thing, and it's important to understand, you're not taxpayers alone. You are customers of this community, and that's really what's going to make a difference. When you focus on you as a customer, that means we have to provide you with the highest value of service at its lowest cost. To do that, we have to make sure that our operations and our organizations are working effectively, and that we can clearly provide that in a meaningful, short period of time. We have some issues that we had to deal with. Let's be honest. $16.5 million of a judgment. That judgment against you and me and everyone who pays taxes here in this community. That was a lack of good business sound business judgment, a lack of understanding that of existing law, a lack of focus on precedent, and also not listening to your own attorney when he gives you advice. That's what's happened. I don't believe that that will be overturned. We need to then also focus in on what I call quality of life. Quality of life, in my mind, is mission-critical operations, mission-critical job functions, public safety, health, and infrastructure. And now, my opponent doesn't like me to talk about this, but 50% of all the wastewater dumped this year was from Pinellas County. We've closed five beaches due to bacterial and phytopl contamination. It's been written up in the track in the New York Times. That impacts our tourist business. That impacts our growth. We have to do something about that, that we can do much better. We have to apply common sense, good business judgment to the direction which we have in going forward. I believe it's important that we have to think to the future and create plans and strategies for this government, for our people, that we can begin to implement today. I've got a prime example of that, and anyone who's had an opportunity or attended the Digital Water Report meeting today would see a part of what we've done. In the past three years, we focused on creating value for the children, over 53,000 children of this community. But the way we did that was not only to give and help fund the programs, but to monitor, measure, and measure their success. By doing that, we put the onus back on the organizations to ensure that we are getting the highest quality, the highest value, at its best cost and its price. And we continue to need to do that. I am concerned about my grandkids. I'm concerned about my kids, their kids, and where we're going from here. And I'm very focused on thinking about a strategy and looking at the future, but beginning to implement that future today, and that's where we're going to make the difference. We've spent a lot of time, and as you heard from my opponent, much as many issues were focused on dysfunctional government, I wasn't part of that dysfunctional government. I'm not that person or people that he spoke to. As I said, I've got nine patents in collaboration. I know I can get people to work together, and how I can work with people to ensure clear value. But I have a vision for the future, and I have a focus for where we can be, and I'm a problem solver. And what I expect to do is when I do win this election, I'll be coming back to each and every one of you and putting you to work, asking you to talk to me about what we really need to do and how we can focus on that for the future. We need to be proactive, not reactive in our government, and that's the difference, I believe, between myself and my opponent. So again, I ask you to take a look at my website. It's www.micmacarroll.com. My phone number's on my palm card. Call me, send me emails. We can talk about the specifics, about any of the issues that you may see, and anything that might be most important on your mind, and you'll find I care and that I want to do what's right for this community. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Amy McCallum, Joy Love-Matrick. Commissioner, you talked about a collaborative effort that has defined the commission. And I look toward what Mike McCarroll talked about, the sewer water problems that we're having. They are not defined by just St. Petersburg or just Saint Pete Beach, but it is certainly a county-wide problem. I'll ask each of you, how can you collaborate and not turn this into a political football and make sure that our basic infrastructure is secured for the future? Like you talked about the newspaper articles, tourism is our number-one industry, so how will each of you manage this for us? Thank you.
Thank you. Good question. And my opponent said I don't like talking about this. It's just not true. We talk about it all the time. What I don't like is when he misleads about his complaints in Pinellas County for the individual issues of some of our municipalities. We talk about it all the time, and in Pinellas County, we've been doing something about it over time. We've doubled our budget for our pipe reline and our sewer program. What we've done since the crisis incident, you've seen, is that I have called for a sewer, county-wide sewer task force, and believe it or not, it is the most popular task force to get a membership on. People have been calling me every day, trying to comment or whatever. So we hold our first meeting on Monday, and the first thing we want to do, the first deliverable we want to do is simply to have better communication. I will tell you, last year, when the city of Saint Pete had issues with Plan Bayou, if they had called any of the other providers, there were 17 different sewer service providers in Pinellas County, if they had called, we could have helped. We could have alleviated some of that. We had Palm Trust sitting by, ready to aid. They didn't know to call each other. The first goal of this task force will be to aid those communications. The second will be to put the technical experts in the same room and to see, is there a feasible way that we can better connect our resources? Can we share capacity? Because we all know there's times when Palm Harbor runs flooding and dry in Saint Pete and vice versa. We've got to have better collaboration on that, and then this is something that has developed over decades, and I just said the last four years. I would agree, Charlie. It's been developing over decades. This is an issue that is not very new, and calling, talking, or asking, waiting for somebody to call you is not the right approach. I mean, that's where we go back to, what's reactive versus proactive. We need it to be proactive. We've actually had sewer taxes or fees and stormwater taxes that have been put aside. We've even had what's called pennies for Pinellas. It's been gathering funds and used funds. Whether or not it was specifically outlined for that or not, we can discuss and question, but it is coming up again, and it should be considered to be outlined for those things. Our sores are infrastructure. Our sewer systems are infrastructure. We should have been maintaining those, and we should have not. It shouldn't be a new option or a new possible problem today. We've known of this, and anywhere, any business, and any other cities as well, you need to focus in on maintaining your systems on a regular basis, and maybe some of this would not have happened. That's part of the real problem. We actually had, what was it, over a year and a half ago, when the water mains, I believe, or some of the spats on Gulf Boulevard from reclaimed water sort of burst, and what really the issue is that it weren't maintained. We should know at least that far and understand that we have an issue, and you're right, it is not just St. Petersburg. And as a leader of the county, a leader of the county, we should be identifying that and working closely with them from the beginning, not as a task force that starts on Monday. Mr. Bill.
Housing First is a nationally recognized program to hinder homelessness, both single individuals and families, and families, since 25% of our homeless are children. For Housing First to work however, there has to be affordable housing. What will either of you or both of you do to ensure that there's affordable housing in Pinellas County for our homeless and for our homeless children?
I think that's an extremely important issue that we need to deal with, and that really requires us to really take a good look at what's available. I will give you an example of what I'm trying to do right now. And the study that I've had done won't be done until after the election is over, so it wasn't done for that reason. I did go in to loan, and I just asked USF St. Pete to provide you with two MBA students. And we're looking at two specific areas. One, are all the housing that's available? What, whether it's foreclosure, whether it's a code violation, whether it might be in others? And we're collecting that data and putting towards what would it cost to take over these homes and add everything back? At the same time, what we'll be saying to those that we're asking to participate is they must be able to purchase at its lowest expense, to provide real value in real homes to people so they can build their careers and they can build their places within the community. The second part of that study is to continue what I've already started, looking at jobs in that area as well. A program that started about two months ago has already provided for jobs, unlocked for poor jobs in local manufacturers in Lelwyn. That's included in the 200 that we talked about. That program is ended, will dovetail together, and will identify places and opportunities for young people and others to come in, and that helps clean up the community. That doesn't answer the total question that you asked, but to be able to get started, we have to start doing things like that, programs like that, to ensure that we can create opportunity and value, rentals for the wrong. Well, I do think that obviously some studies currently are good. What we do is we work currently with the Homeless Leadership Board of Pinellas County, and we fund through those programs, but we did step in to loan. We kept the promise that previous commissions made about how to spend those pennies for Pinellas dollars, and we spent $5 million to secure 55 units of spas as well as other properties in the Lelwyn community, Lelwyn Heights, 54th Avenue there. The number-one thing there was we kept the property out of the hands of the slum lords, which was what was happening in Lelwyn. People were coming in, renting, trying to rent property, just not maintaining. Another area that we believe in the Housing First Initiative, Commissioner Long and Commissioner Seal have provided incredible leadership on this issue. We believe in that because we work with professionals, and in Pinellas County, we are incredibly fortunate to have our sheriff on this issue. His leadership at St. Harbor, the partnership with Pinellas County who created a clinic there, which provides health care for many of the people living there or staying there. That has helped alleviate some of the burdens. We're now working, and we've gotten some leadership from Tallahassee on this as well. We've identified some of what we call the frequent flyers, 30 to 40 individuals in Pinellas County, many of them homeless, that are a fiscal drain on all of our revenues, sometimes over $2, $2.5 million. By holistically approaching these individuals and wraparound services, including Housing First, we can, one, provide better quality of life for those folks, return them to civilized society, as well as, I'm hoping our question's for future areas, but it's something that we continue to work on. Obviously, it's an issue that's important for all of us, and thank you for your leadership on this issue as well, sir. Matt Leather. Matt Leather, New Tiger. In an era where incumbents win reelection significantly more often than they lose, do you support term limits on legislative bodies, not only at the federal level, but the county commission level as well? I'm not a supporter of term limits. I benefited and had term limits open the door for me to run for my first time in Tallahassee, and I watched the decline of Tallahassee. I don't believe term limits have served Tallahassee and Lelwyn well at all. And to your point about incumbents winning, I will tell you, in Pinellas County, we have four commissioners currently on the board that are in their first term or less, so the voters have a way to decide, and I think that's where it should stay. Matt, before I answer your question, I just have one little comment that I wanted to get back from the previous one. The study that we're doing in Lelwyn right now shows that there are a number of people that own, actually foreigners, that own property in Lelwyn that are being rented out too. So if that's not someone, I'm not so sure what could be. The second part that I turn back to is I think there's a difference, and I think we have to focus on term limits as to where they might best play. Unfortunately, the last Unfortunately, the last time term limits came up, they were focused on everyone. And I don't believe that constitutional officers should be included in that. Those are more like real jobs that are going to happen. But to keep, but to keep, and I'm glad to laugh, because that's really good, to keep the focus, though, on public ownership and growth, just put in time where I believe there's a need to issue a return. So yes, I would agree that there's a need specifically in the county to put a term limits on the county commission and allow new life and new blood to work their way in. Unfortunately, what we've had is, in many cases, you know, it is, I don't know, at first, I tell you, it's not built out when you're an unknown, trying to come in and trying to find your way, you know, when there are politics or people have been in politics for a long time. The key is that you get the right message out. We'll see what happens this year. But I do believe that there should be term limits.
Susan? Susan McGrath, can you tell me, gentlemen, if you support the sale of Pinellas Waterfield Mine Lands in Pasco, and why do I mind?
We look at this issue very closely, and through our work with Tampa Bay Water, through the land that was purchased along, along the time we got it, we have made a determination at the current time that we want to maintain ownership of that property. We think it's in our best interest, fiscally, and also potentially for water resources down the line.
I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I'm not so sure that's the right decision. I think what we need to look at is where the real value will come from Pinellas County and to the voters and the people of Pinellas County. And if it's really going to get our value, I'm not so sure it does. I think we need to, we would then make that decision. But outright, just aside from that, we should keep this, these properties in another category. I'm not sure where the value is for the people of Pinellas.
Barbara? This is to both of you.
Your name.
Oh, sorry, Barbara, listen, take me. In 2010, the people of Hillsborough voted down the one percent tax, local option tax for transportation. And then it came over here, and of course, in 2014, by sixty-two to thirty-eight percent, the people of Pinellas County voted no on Green Line, which was the one percent, the same one percent local option surtax for transportation, similar to the pay for Pinellas along that same category of tax. Just this summer, Hillsborough again tried to put on, sorry, just this summer, Hillsborough again tried to put it back on the ballot in November again, and it was voted down by the county. So do you support putting that one percent on after people have said no so many times?
Oh, good question. And to go back, since we're going back to the previous questions, at a forum last week, Mr. McQuirri said he was willing to sell it, the land in Pasco County, just straight out. And I think that as long as you hold it, you can always sell it. And once you sell it, you can't pull it back. So as far as Green Line, we saw that the voters soundly rejected that plan. I would not support bringing that same plan back on the ballot again. If we're going to go to the voters, we have to be with a different idea, a different vision, and after making the community build a consensus.
In your opinion, I did say it. And I also said we need to look at what opportunities could be in the future. But not, I think it should go back up, and not until. We need a comprehensive plan to focus on what transportation may or may not be. I don't think we have one. I don't think everyone's ever really come together and defined what is, what we're going to need to. I use this in my campaign speeches all along. When I talk to people in Dunedin, they tell me all they want is give me a golf cart, and that's all I need. Maybe I'll need a ride to go to the airport sometime. We need to speak to people in St. Petersburg. They believe they need mass transit for where they are in this town. We've got to look at all options and define what those options are, and where is our future strategy on, where are we going to be when we grow up? And create a strategic plan that then, after that, can be presented to the community for their decision. Remember, again, you're my customer, and I'm not looking at you to just pay for anything that comes up. I'm looking at you to define what your needs are and how we can work very closely together to meet those needs.
Charlie? I don't see one answer. Shannon?
Hi, Shannon. Ms. McQuirri, I was wondering if you could clarify, perhaps expand on your previous statement that you felt that constitutional officers were "real jobs," and can you maybe expand on what you feel the role of county commissioners are?
Sure. You know, Charlie said he's had a great job. I'd say I don't look at a county commissioner as a job. I look at this as a service back to the community. Now, jobs to me are ones that provide an ongoing service, specific, ongoing service and function. The county commission is much broader. I'm not disagreeing with the role. I think it's much broader, it has broader oversight. And I think that that's where there's a need for new blood, for new focus and new visions for the future. Because that's really a major part of where the county commission is. It not only needs to maintain and follow the law, but it really needs to provide a future vision and a future focus that we can start implementing today and really begin to measure for the value and the success of our community. It needs to be out visiting the people and talking to people and understanding overall needs. I can't quantify that job description. I can for a property operator. I can for a county clerk. But I don't see that as being for a county mission.
Thank you for your question. I can tell you that for almost four years, I've been working very hard at this very real job. And seven commissioners, both Democrat and Republican, that you have, treat this as a professional job. We put our time, our energy, our thought, our study into it. It's not just a part-time charity gig that you might think about, that my point is describing. In his mailers, he goes further than that. He doesn't just call me a career politician. He complains and discredits any of my service in public life, my time working for the legislature as a staffer, in my nearly thirteen years working at the university. I think those people have real jobs too, and I do think they deserve to be respected.
Yes, sir.
Elaine New, what do you see as the role of the county commission in supporting their state court system in Pinellas County?
We have a very specifically defined by statute role in supporting our court system, both financially and structurally. We have great partnerships with Mr. McKay, Mr. Dillinger, and our sheriff, and we fulfill those roles very well through that collaboration, through our budgeting process, through our rulemaking. And you see a lot of our, in the last penny, a certain section of that penny for Pinellas, which has to be negotiated between the county and all the cities. A certain portion of that last penny was dedicated to the complex at Forty-Ninth Street for our court system, as well as for the new eighty-five million dollar public safety complex on Alderman Road. So we work very well with our court partners.
Just one more quick response back, and I'll come to your question. I never said that I look at this as a service, being a service provider, a service to the community with part-time or some last job. What I say is that service to the community is the most important thing to do. And my wife would tell you that I spend more time and more effort than I did on my job, to be quite honest with you, because most of the time on my job, I was flying somewhere. I spend most of my time very much focused on providing clear, high-quality value and service to this community. Mr. Dillinger, going back to your question, Mr. Dillinger and I sit on the juvenile welfare board together. I very much support the court system. I very much support the role that he plays. I very much support the role that the sheriff plays, as well as everyone else in the court system. And it's important that we keep on top of it and ensure that it continues to operate effectively, and that it operates in a manner that allows them to really do their jobs. And that's defined by what they follow in the law.
My turn. Anybody else? I'm sorry, your answer.
He's going, I was going to say.
Okay.
My name is Gregory Wilson. Mr. McQuirri, you've characterized Mr. Justice's service as being a career politician, without really any respect for the previous employment that he's pointed out. In 1994, Jack LaValle first ran for the Senate and served with distinction until 2002. And when Charlie Justice was a senator and stepped down to run for Congress, Jack LaValle sought and won that seat and continues to serve today. He's considered one of the most senior members of the Senate and, by all accounts, a great asset to the Tampa Bay area. Do you consider Jack LaValle a career politician?
Great question. You know what, Jack LaValle does have a business as well. And I think if you're going to listen to what I said, if you're what I'm trying to say, I'll make reference and make sure that I give you the right explanation of what that meant. As a businessman, I learned to sign the front of a check, not the back of the check. I had to learn very quickly on how businesses have to run and operate. The only way you do that is that you have to be in front of the meeting. You have to understand employment issues. You have to understand needs for growth and management. You also have to make sure the funds are there and are developed for sales and marketing organization. So when I talk about jobs, and I talk about the difference between someone who's been in a career political role and someone who's had to operate and manage businesses, that's where I'm debating this station.
Is there any else?
Was it a yes or what? I mean, I thought I answered the question properly, but what I'm saying is, Jack LaValle does have his own business as well, so he's both, he's a businessman. He's on the consulting company, he's on a printing company, he's on many other things as well. So yeah, he has been a businessman as well. Don't you want me to hear this? I'm not sure.
No, I thought you thought he was a career politician.
I said he's a businessman and he's a career politician. He's both.
If you look at the mailers and you look at the ads, the flyers, and my point was out, career politician is not said in a loving, respectful way. So let's be clear about that. I have another career as well. I worked for the University of South Florida-St. Pete for over a decade. I valued that career. I valued that service. We considered that a real job as well, along with six hundred people that work on that campus. And I just, did you hear the disdain in the voice? If you don't sign the front of a check, if you don't sign the front of the check, the value is not the same as if you only signed the back of the check. I just don't agree with that. I value the people who create the jobs and have the businesses and stake their claim that way. I absolutely respect that, I thought my heart. But I also respect the people who put in a day's work and sign the back of the check, like the hundreds of employees I work with at USF, and the teachers, and the other people who do their service to our community every single day.
I think we both have a great, so.
We have two questions, still go to Jim and then.
Hi, Jim Holson. In Amendment Two passes, which is the medical marijuana amendment, would either of you support laws that restrict where medical marijuana can be dispensed in Pinellas County?
Thank you for your question. I do support Amendment Two, and I thought Senator Brandis wrote a great editorial about that. We actually just, funny that you bring that up, our commission started discussing this last week about whether or not we would start to look at zoning and rules about where those dispensaries would be allowed. So we're going to have that conversation, and I think that it's something we should filter. We don't want an explosion of the wrong kind of shops. But we will follow the law, and we will do our job to look at it accordingly, make sure that ours can be safe.
I'm concerned that we don't recreate, I think, as the sheriff, so remember recreating the pill bills again. That concerns me. I'm afraid that we will be too, if the law passes, we'll have to follow it. But what's critical, and what we really need to make sure that we do, is that we ensure that it's followed to the letter of what it is, and that's to support the medical issues for those who need it, and not create what we just spent a great deal of time, the sheriff has spent a great deal of time on, trying to dissolve and break up what were once pill bills that this county was holding.
Hi, please, Mr. Jarrett Largo. Can you tell me a little bit about sixteen point five million judgment against the county? Should things have been handled differently, and do you feel that Pinellas County residents deserve an apology?
This is another one of my fondest favorite issues that I don't think Cliff understands. The lawsuit was not a land use lawsuit, by the way. That's how it's portrayed, it's not. It was about a way we retrieve those businesses. I will tell you, if you read the order from the administrative judge, and this is what a lot of people say, you didn't follow the administrative judge's ruling. It wasn't a ruling. It was a declaration that the property met certain criteria for a land use change. But if you read the article from the paper from when that happened, the administrative judge agreed in his nineteen-page ruling, although he conceded that the final interpretation is for the elected officials alone. So we have the legislative authority to make land use decisions in issues like that. So do I apologize for standing up and protecting the neighborhoods to maintain what we decided was the right use of land in the community? I don't apologize for that. And when this case goes to a three-judge panel in Lincoln that clearly understands land use law, there will be a return.
I think it's right. It's not, it was not a land use issue. What the issue was, was that the county commission had overstepped its bounds on deciding what was already ruled on by a local city. The county commission is responsible for unincorporated areas. The city of Safety Harbor was responsible for the city of Safety Harbor. The ruling is, he's right, the actual final ruling, the first ruling that came from the administrative judge basically came back and told him that. And when the attorney, when his own attorney was asked the question, the attorney told him that he should listen to what the judge had told him, whether the decision was made not to, and move it forward. The second part of that is, it then went to a circuit court. And by the way, the circuit court judge was not only by himself, but he had the administrative judge and a third judge that was overseeing and recommending to him what was happening. Yes, it was a constitutional issue against that company. That's what the ruling was. The ruling was one on a constitutional issue. That company's constitutional rights were violated. That turned into a sixteen point five million dollar plus court fees plus attorney fees at a four point seven eight percent interest rate per day. And with the new appeal, could be as much as twenty, could be as much as twenty-five million dollars. And I don't believe that it will be overturned.
So this is a call for the last question. And let's stay away from this issue, please, respectfully. This is in litigation, and we're not going to litigate it here. Thank you. So, in the back?
Thank you both for participating today. My name is Kelly Kershner. Two questions. Could you define a slum landlord, be it a foreign national or a local resident, and what is the participation that space for a private individual in providing affordable housing? Second question, what is your position on the county's role in keeping Major League Baseball in Pinellas County? All right, I'll take number two.
Did you call the Tropicana Field a slum? Is that what you said? Thank you for your question. The county commission is playing the role that we have. We will be one of the largest funding partners in the stadium to build in Pinellas County with the use of the bed tax. I support using the bed tax for that if a stadium plan is developed that works. Building a brand-new stadium right next to Tropicana Field or somewhere else in Pinellas without a plan to make the team a success, without making a success in the community, is not something that we want to do. So the county will play a role in that funding issue.
I believe that it has to be of benefit to the community. I agree that we might use bed tax to help support and build one. But not unless and only if it becomes a value to this community for people that live here. We have to see a financial impact. We have to see something that's going to grow and extend jobs and build opportunity for the growth of this community. If it's not going to be that, then I wouldn't agree with it. My concern is, as we look at the sports teams across the country, most of which have huge and large businesses that support it, if you look at New York, Atlanta, even LA now as it's moving on, there are businesses that are going to buy up the space and have seats, take over most of the seats. Then it becomes an open opportunity for people to buy into. I don't know that we have that here. And I think that the Rays have to help find that out. And if they're willing to show us that, and to show us a real value for this community, then we can talk. If it's not, then we find out where they go from there.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Now, you will each have two minutes to conclude your remarks. And Mr. McQuirri, I believe the agreement was for you to go first, if you don't mind. You can go up here if you want, or you can sit there. You can go up here if you want, or you can sit there, whichever you...
We'll open this there, it's easier. I think we've heard today the differences between my point and mine. I think you've seen a bit about and know about why we approach things very differently. I, who'm a businessman, who's spent a great deal of time giving back, I've been a businessman who's focused on providing real value and support to this community and to the people in this community. I care. I don't look at anyone for where they came from, or what religion they might be, or any other differences that they may have between me and them. We are all people, and we're all customers, are our government, and our government needs to support us. We need to be able, again, look and focus in on where we're going and how we're going to get there, but most importantly, we need to be able to measure the success of that. So we need to be able to provide you as taxpayers as a community, a better opportunity to be able to enjoy the paradise we call Pinellas County. I have the skills and the capabilities to do that. I am a leader, and I am very proactive, working closely with others to achieve those goals. So if that's what you're looking for in the future, if that's what you're really looking forward to take us forward in this community, then please, go to the polls or vote in your absentee ballots before November eighth, and vote for me, Mike McCurran, for County Commission, District Three.
Mr. Justice?
Thank you very much for being here today. I appreciate your interest in our local government, what's going on in Pinellas County. I'll restate, four years ago, our county commission was a mess. What you've seen over the last four years is a progress of a team. We have a wonderful team right now, Democrats and Republicans, working together on your county commission. And by being collaborative, by frankly just being civil to each other, we have built partnerships with our twenty-four cities, with our nonprofit leaders, and leaders around the bank. That helps us succeed and address every issue that we've talked about tonight, whether it's looking at our infrastructure, addressing our transportation needs, dealing with homelessness issues, and yes, even deciding where to build a stadium. These issues all are addressed better when we work together. And again, I think it's important to look at why people want for office. Is it simply to shift the partisan tables, or is it to serve the community? As has been pointed out, I have a lifetime of public service that you can examine of why I do what I do in my very real job, Mr. County Commissioner. With your support, I'd like to continue that job in four more years. You can learn more about my biography and the issues that we worked on at charlottejustice.com. I'd like to let you know that there's still more important work to do, and I'd be grateful for your vote. Thank you very much.